You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners Court Meetings. Commissioners Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Beginning June the 27th, if you have an outstanding misdemeanor or a felony warrant, we are giving the public a chance to clear their warrant by taking advantage of being processed at the satellite booking office in lieu of the county jail. This is also an opportunity to avoid your name being published on a criminal warrants list and being arrested at your home or place of business. For further information, call 546-2093 or visit epcounty.com and click on "Operations Safe Streets."
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contract and return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners Court Meetings. Commissioners Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Ready to get started, Mr. Nava, whenever you are. Thank you, Judge. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, July 23rd, 2018. Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Item number three is the Consent Agenda, composed of items 3A through 3J. Are there any items that members of the Court or the public would like to pull for individual discussion? Commissioners, any items you'd like pulled, or members of the public that'd like to pull any items? Hearing none, make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Take it.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four is public comments. I don't believe we have anybody signed up for public comment this morning, Mr. Nava. Uh, no, sir, I don't have anybody either.
Item number five, presentation. Receive a presentation from Destination El Paso regarding the 2018 South by Southwest Trade Show and Conference in Austin, Texas.
Morning.
Good morning, Your Honor and Commissioners. Brian Crowe with Destination El Paso this morning. Just going to walk you through our report that we sent out to your offices a few weeks ago on a recap for South by Southwest earlier this year, 2018. As you may recall, the city and the county were partners on this effort to have El Paso have a presence at South by Southwest. This was our second year. I kind of want to walk you through some of the highlights of the event and some of the metrics from that as well. So first of all, what is South by Southwest? This is an event that began in 1987 in Austin. It's really a great congregation of a number of different thought leaders and different lines of work, from interactive to film to music, of course, which they're probably most known for. But where our focus is really in the exhibition portion, you've got a great turnout from folks from all over the world, and it's really become the exhibition segment that has become an opportunity for a number of different locations, specifically focusing on economic development, startup businesses, and opportunities in those communities, which is what we are using the South by Southwest event for. So our activation is mostly focused on the exhibition, which takes place in the middle of the three different portions of South by Southwest, which are interactive film and music. And so they kind of overlay each other, and the expo portion sits right in between, and it takes up the entire Austin Convention Center. And actually, I can show you where we were located on the trade show floor. You can see right here, this is a layout of the exhibit halls of the Austin Convention Center, Destination El Paso located immediately at this entrance point. We had great location this year and a larger footprint to be able to host a number of startup companies that were with us. We were also, in addition to the city and county partnership, we were partnered with the City of Las Cruces, and we were partnered with the Borderplex Alliance as well. So we had a great regional presentation of our area. UTEP had a very large activation, as well as a number of different local startup companies that really wouldn't be able to get this level of access to this type of audience on their own, because it is not an inexpensive thing to activate to get onto the trade show for this event. We were very pleased with our location. As you can see, foot traffic immediately comes right towards the Destination El Paso booth. You can see here on it, there's some other whole countries represented, Mexico, which is down the way from us, a number, everything from Korea to Ireland, to individual cities that also, San Antonio, another major city that also exhibits at this. Just to give you an idea of the different types of exhibitors that choose to use South by Southwest as a platform to showcase their communities and their opportunities. Here's a rendering of the booth. You can see we had an El Paso segment. We also had a Las Cruces segment on the back portion. The logos of the representative partners were featured throughout the booth, and we also had lead collecting devices that allowed us to do follow-up and send lead data to all of the partners. We had over 650 different unique leads that we picked up from the event, and then those were shared with each of our partners. So the city's economic development team, the county's economic development team, the Borderplex, UTEP, the City of Las Cruces, and others were all able to then do follow-up outreach to those. We've also done some follow-up messaging to that group as well. So why do we participate? It's the largest exhibition at South by Southwest. The trade show enhances and complements conference programming with endless unexpected discovery opportunities. You'll never really, it's really the conclave of all the different creative businesses and organizations together right there on the exhibition floor. And it's a really great opportunity for us to highlight our region, the opportunities in our region, talk about the incredible growth of investment that's made in this area, and to showcase the El Paso, Las Cruces, and surrounding areas to prospective companies and prospective investors. And with over 300 exhibitors on hand and over 40,000 people that come across the floor on a four-day event, it's really the prime location. You can see here all of our partners, Visit El Paso, Visit Las Cruces, UTEP, the Borderplex Alliance, and then, of course, the city and county of El Paso. So the startup companies, I think, really are the key to the exhibition. It's giving these different organizations that have a connection to our region an opportunity to showcase whatever their product may be. And we have a number of different things that we were able to showcase at that time. I'll kind of walk through briefly some of the different companies here, and unfortunately, I can't speak as an expert on the individual companies, but I would encourage you, if you were so inclined, to actually have follow-up conversations with them. I mean, they're the ones that probably directly benefit the most from what you've been able to do, giving them the opportunity to talk about their company, their product, and attract investment or sales for their product, which helped grow, obviously, their presence in the El Paso-Las Cruces area. I think the first one was an exhibit-based software that they allowed museums to basically recreate their, in a digital presence, and to be able to showcase them online. Another company that did virtual reality to reduce construction errors, to be able to use the modeling from a project, and rather than wait until you were actually in the field doing the actual project, you could actually identify possible challenges that you might have with the construction documents in advance. It's saving a lot of money, so that was their product. There was an e-procurement company that was showcased there, talking about being able to do larger, having larger buying power to be able to reduce the cost of products, and basically using sort of the power of a number of different buyers to be able to reduce the cost of different things. So it's kind of like that, it's almost like the sharing economy for procurement, if that makes sense. Intone actually got a lot of attention on the show floor. Basically, it allows folks to enhance their singing ability. So they had basically an on-floor karaoke station, and people were able to come and demonstrate how, even if you aren't quite gifted with the talents of singing, that through this technology, they could actually adjust your voice. And it was intended to be a training tool, so you could identify where you were off pitch and like how you could adjust and train yourself to be able to actually be on pitch. So it basically created a software version of the natural ear to identify pitch issues and be able to help training. But we got a lot of interest in that, and I know a number of different groups stopped by to check out Intone. O-Town Medical, I think, was working on dialysis product. It was, it's actually developed by a local dialysis nurse, and so he was looking at ways to improve wound care and to avoid things like infection and amputation. And he had a product that also had telemedicine monitoring, so they could provide feedback to a caregiver for folks that were on dialysis and that may have some, to do some wound care work at home. Another company, Electric Caregiver, a really, actually, very large and recently very highly capitalized company out of the Las Cruces market, to use AI and conversational-based speech to create virtual caregiving systems and residential patient monitoring support systems. So it's the really high-tech version of being able to provide care at home for those that may need that, and be able to provide an electronic back net to be able to provide additional support to those that need caregivers at home. So another piece of our rollout in Austin was also a networking event, an opportunity for us to invite a number of folks to get together and meet with some of our elected leaders. And so we partnered with Texas Monthly, who also did a little sidebar on the piece in the Texas Monthly magazine. You can see a segment of that here, was hosted on March 12th for about two hours at their office overlooking the Capitol area. We were fortunate to have representation from state officials, state and national meeting planners, UTEP alumni, business executives, Mayor DiMargo, County Judge Ruben Vogt. We had a little over 100 folks in attendance, and we also had the publisher of the Texas Monthly join us as well. It was a great way for us to talk about what's going on in our community, as well as be able to share some of our El Paso hospitality. And since we have this great conclave of all these folks that are in the community at that time, to usually to take in South by Southwest or other items related to the legislature, this is a great opportunity for us to showcase our city with that group. So then another activation we have are the petty cabs, and I think you may have seen us do this last year as well. There is a great way for us to market and brand the city. So in addition to being on the expo floor, talking about economic development and the growth of the region, we're able to also do some destination marketing through the petty cabs. So for the 10 days of South by Southwest, nine petty cabs, a two-mile radius of area that they generally rotated around in on eight-hour shifts. We had an incredible amount of exposure, that you're seeing a sample here of the Amigo Man model that we did as well, as one that was to emulate a ride on the Wiler aerial tram, and you could take a photo of yourself inside, what looked like the tram car, and it gave you sort of that background, like you were going through the Franklin Mountains. Those were very highly popular. There are a number of huge national, international brands that use the same tool. They utilize petty cabs to market, use everything from big television shows to banks to anything in between. And El Paso's activation is actually one of the sought-after ones, because I think we've done a really great job of being unique and showing off our area, as well as creating things that people wanted to interact in, like taking their photo with the Amigo Man or taking their photo in what is the cable car for the Wiler aerial tramway. So we are playing on a level of much larger, folks with huge advertising budgets, and it was really great to see how well I think our product stacked up against those as well. So just to give you kind of an overview, estimated number of rides, five rides per hour, carrying two people, often three per trip, just to kind of give you an idea of about how many people interacted with the petty cabs. They were likely viewed as many as 150 to 200 times a day, a million set of eyes over the course of 10 days. Obviously, there's folks that ride them, but there's also people who see them moving through the city. At this particular time in the downtown area surrounding the convention center, it's extremely high in foot traffic. In fact, numerous roads are closed, so just to be able to accommodate the pedestrian traffic, since it is such a high-density and highly attended event. And the petty cabs are allowed to go through those areas where the vehicles are not, so it's a very common way for people to get around, to move from hotels or from different off-site events in the convention center as well. So in addition to obviously carrying a number of passengers, we also have the opportunity to just be visible to a lot of folks that are moving throughout the city. And actually, our partner, the company that we partner with in Austin to do the petty cabs, is actually from an El Paso, an El Paso expat, and he's a huge supporter of ours. In fact, he actually could sell these petty cabs to much larger brands for a lot more money, but he chooses to partner with us each year, so he reserves a number of the petty cabs for us. And then additionally, while our contract is for the 10-day period of South by Southwest, he loves them a lot, and he's a big proponent of El Paso, so he actually keeps them running with the El Paso advertising on them for weeks after our activation is over. So we do get a lot of additional play out of them as well. So it's a really great partnership for us. Here's distance traveled and kind of all the math behind the traveling with the petty cabs, about over 300 miles per day per petty cab, so you can get the idea of how your message is being circulated around this highly populated, highly dense area all the way throughout South by Southwest. Social media, another part of our activation, is messaging while we are there and taking advantage of all the attention that South by Southwest gets on a national, international level through social media. Let's just give you some numbers from our outreach. Over 17,000 impressions, a reach of almost 300,000. That's organic outreach through social media, through everything like Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. And you can see some samples here of some of the things that we messaged. Some of the messages are direct from Visit El Paso, others are through partners and participants. Technology Hub, Adifuentes, was on the expo floor. They took advantage of using their channels and using the same hashtags that we gave them to be able to tie El Paso's effort together, so we could measure that impact. A little bit more of the snapshot here, we talked about what the different reach and impressions were. We're giving you the breakdown by platform through Facebook, Instagram, and Facebook Messenger, what our different targets were, including the number of impressions. We were focused on talking to folks that were at South by Southwest, focused on paid ads in and around the downtown area. So if you're mobile device or your laptop, if you were working in the area, you were fed advertising about El Paso. This was a paid effort that we wrapped into, to also go along with our organic outreach that you saw on the previous slide. So this talks about, we talked about our showcase, we talked about the different things on our floor, and be able to attract folks that might be interested in what El Paso had to offer through advertising to come in and visit our booth on South by Southwest floor. So this is another part of the ways that we activate while we're there. And then media, this is just the coverage that we got through broadcast media. You can see publicity value of about $13,000, an audience of about almost 90,000. Just gives you kind of a breakdown. The city sent their team from Your City in Five to put together a number of segments that they aired on the City of El Paso broadcast channel, as well as the city's YouTube channel to talk about the efforts. A lot of the things that we hastily shared with you in the presentation here this morning were highlights of the segments, the petty cab activation, the expo floor, the corporate partners that were on the floor with us, the startup companies, interviews with them, those are the different types of things they put together in their individual segments. And so here, finally, I'll walk you through the budget. As you know, each partner was committed to half of the cost, up to $50,000. Here is a breakdown of that. We actually, our total estimated budget was a little, about around $125,000, with the support of, in addition to $25,000 from Visit Las Cruces, as well as $5,000 from the Borderplex. That put us right, left over that $100,000 number that we presented to the city and the county, and then each partner was invoiced for their share. The county's responsibility was 50% of the $96,978.55. But there's a breakdown, you can see the different categories, everything from what it costs to activate the booth, what it costs to do the Texas Monthly outreach event, the cost for the petty cabs, travel and support for staff for execution, and then just the other costs related to promoting and activating the event. So we were right, just slightly under budget, and coming forward. just slightly under budget, and, and coming forward with our finals for the event for 2018. And that is our overview presentation. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
I do have a question, Brian. This is the second year that we've done this?
Correct.
And so after having done it twice, different floor space each time and different approaches, is there anything that you all think we could do differently to maximize our impact while there?
Well, one of the things that we are trying to do, we tried to do it in year one, we tried to do it in year two. We have gotten a little better assurances that they will be interested for year three, which is to bring Juarez and the State of Chihuahua in as a partner as well. This last time, there were challenges with their, both their state and municipal election cycle and budgets that they didn't want to participate. But we think that we are very powerful as, as a region as a whole, and in our conversations with the state office for economic development and tourism for the State of Chihuahua, they have expressed an interest. They've expressed interest each year, but it just didn't work out for them. We're hopeful that they can participate going forward. I would say that's the next big add for us. It'll also hopefully, it minimizes the investment by the other partners, the more folks that we can get involved in, in sharing the costs. But I also think that when we're talking about our region, there's obviously, that's a huge segment for us, is the, is the Juarez impact. And so I think that's something that we need to, to add if, if we can do it.
Brian, one of the questions that I follow up on what the judge was asking, I, I know this is our second year, and I saw the number of leads. And, and for one, I am so high on marketing. If you don't market yourself, you're not going to do as well as somebody who does marketing well. And in the 650 leads, and I saw last year's report that you sent me also, you had quite a few leads. Of those leads, what has actually turned into, and I, I know it's going to be very hard to quantify, but how many tourists did we get? How many new businesses? And I'm talking about whether it be a ma and pa kind of coffee shop to a big industrial complex. What did this translate into?
So we turn the leads over to the primary partners, which are the Economic Development Office for the city, Economic Development Office for the county, Visit Las Cruces, the Borderplex, and actually, all the partners were given access to them. But those are really the kind of the primary partners that are then, can call through those leads to identify the ones that are going to be closest in alignment with what their particular organization is leading on, and then be able to do follow-up to be able to create that connection, and hopefully drive some type of activity from that. Generally, the South by Southwest activation is not a tourism marketing show. We do have an element of that, by the way, we bring the pedicabs in to be able to just market the destination and talk about sort of the cool edginess of the El Paso region. And so because we have such a high concentration of folks from all over the world that are in Austin at that time, we choose to do that advertising as a part of this. But of course, the biggest activation is the expo, which we're talking about where the leads came from. You know, there were a handful that were folks that requested more information about the destination, that our office then sent visitors' guides and other information to and did follow-up on. But the majority of those leads are really business-based leads. We also don't, a lead for us isn't every person that sets foot in the booth. The booth traffic is obviously much higher than 650 folks over the course of four days. It's only genuine connections that we track as leads, someone who actually wants to be followed up with, who is offering to give you their content information for a very specific reason. So we would track what it is that they were interested in, and then that information goes to the individual supporting partners for follow-up with. So I, we would have to check with City of El Paso to see what they did with their leads, and see what the county did with their leads, and what Borderplex did with those leads as well, to see what those, what the, what the outcomes are from that. For our office, it's really more of our, our role is to do the implementation and activation, because we're set up in a manner to be able to do that on behalf of the city. But we don't actually do a lot with the, with the leads ourselves, because they're generally not tourism leads.
Also, can I add, a lot of the leads came from the startup companies. The startup companies had the same mechanism to be able to capture the leads. So if they talked to someone, they're actually contacting that lead, that lead as well.
And I appreciate that. And I know it's very difficult for you to really pinpoint, okay, this is what it's turned, translates to. But since I'm looking at you, you're, you're giving us the report, I'm not going to be calling several different entities to, to try to get what I'm looking for. So maybe in the future, I'm, like I said, I'm very for promoting El Paso. I mean, there's so many things. We could write volumes of what's so magical about this area. But something that maybe through your office you can put together that this company actually came to El Paso, maybe they didn't open up, but they came here. And this company did in fact come to El Paso, and they're planning on starting their operation here.
Well, Commissioner, your, your timing is good. I mean, the event was in March. There's a, there's a, there's an amount of time that's needed for those leads to mature. We could certainly do an outreach to the partners that received all those leads and be able to get some type of survey feedback from them to see where they are with those leads and what they have done with them. It's been about six months or so since the, since the event took place.
Especially if you're looking at last year, if you go back to last year, what have those leads turned into? I know that this year is a little quick, but maybe we can start getting an idea of what this actually translates to for El Paso.
Sure. And each year, we try to add another element of how we can answer that question. How can we track, you know, what the ROI is for these? There are some, as you can see, there are some metrics in here that are easily, able to track. Obviously, lead generation can be tracked. The activation with, you know, for example, the pedicabs can be tracked. The number of folks that we get to be interactive with the booth can be tracked, our social media outreach, our paid outreach, we can track those numbers. But I know that the commission's interested in kind of where the, the big picture pieces are in terms of getting business to, to advance here. And so I think there are those things, there are things that take time. But we can definitely go out to the stakeholders to get better information in terms of what they were able to do with that information.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? We appreciate the presentation. I know that this is always a mammoth undertaking for your team as we lead up to South by Southwest, but we appreciate this information, and I'm sure the court will consider future participation in the coming months.
Yeah, and as the commissioner requested, we'll do that outreach, and it will reach out, send something back to all of your offices, and probably give us maybe two or three weeks to kind of see what the responses are. But we can go out to the partners and see what they have to say.
Thanks a lot. And by the way, I noticed those pedicabs in, in Messia sometime back, and he was the same one that was in, in Austin. And I remember those ads simply, you know, 65 miles from here. So they, seems like they are effective.
Yeah, they're, they're a great tool. And if you look at what kind of all the different ways people are trying to market in that period, I mean, all these different companies and brands are all taking advantage of the fact that there are all these people all in one location, everything from, you know, flyover banners to people buying out whole sides of buildings with huge banners. There's a lot of promotions in the media segment for like television shows and, and things like that. But I think we're one of the few destinations that's marketing through that channel. We got a lot of really positive feedback about it. And each year, we challenge ourselves to be more creative with what we can do with the pedicab. This year, basically creating, you know, the car from the Wiler aerial tram was the big, was the big piece that we did this year. So it was very, very cool. And there were two others as well, right?
Right. And this weekend in Alpine and Marfa, there's a major music festival called Viva Big Ben, and the pedicabs will also be there this weekend. Since we worked with somebody here from El Paso, he was able to retain the same image and then bring them to, to the market next, over this weekend, where they're expecting about 20,000 people from around the Texas state to come and experience Viva Big Ben.
So we get a lot of mileage out of that product. We're very fortunate that he's a very big proponent of El Paso, and so he works with us in our, in our limited budget to really get the most out of it. So there's a lot of different ways for us to activate that.
And your name for the record, just so that we have it.
Veronica Castan, Director of Tours.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your support.
Appreciate it. Have a good afternoon. And before we move on, just two quick items before we get to the auditor's presentation. So it may feel a little warm for everybody. As you all know, the heat has been pretty intense over the, the last couple of days, and so we had a slight glitch, but our system is up and running, and it should be a little fresher in the next couple of hours. And two, Commissioner Hagerty celebrated her birthday on Thursday, and so happy birthday to Commissioner.
I don't think we need to talk about that.
It's a good thing.
Item number six, auditor. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the financial advisor contract with George K. Baum and Company. The contract is for a one-year period with a four automatic one-year renewals for a maximum of five years. Contract number 2018-0403.
Morning, Commissioners. Brad Engs with George K. Baum and Company. Pleased to be here. Today, in front of you, you have a renewal of an engagement. As a reminder, we've been with the county since 2012, recently going through an RFP process. If the auditor's office or budget office has any other comments, be happy to answer those. Many ways, this contract reflects the previous contract. Most importantly, this requires us to have a fiduciary duty to you, this governmental unit and the people of El Paso County. What that means is we put your interests in front of our own, and also some of the other folks that vie for your business. So it also has stipulations that we help you with your ongoing continuing disclosure and provide advice to you anytime you see fit, and help you with any analysis you see in regards to your capital financing.
Commissioners, any questions? The bid was awarded. This is simply the contract. If there are no questions, I'd make a motion to approve. Unless Mr. Dion would like to add anything?
No, Judge. This is just a follow-up to the RFP award. Thank you.
Take.
Commissioner Pettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number seven, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the independent registered municipal advisor disclosure certificate.
Morning once again. The independent registered municipal advisor disclosure, what we refer to as an Irma letter in the industry, will be published and put out there so that any underwriter or other third party that wishes to do business with the county in regards to its financing, bond underwritings, has the opportunity to present this to you, to send it to your auditor's, auditor's office or budget office, and provide you with high-level, sophisticated type analysis and proposals. What it says is that you're represented by George K. Baum and Company and myself and our team to help you evaluate any of these offers that may come forward. We believe this is a way to continue to get active participation in the county and get some of those good ideas in front of you.
Mr. Dion, anything you'd like to add on top of that?
This is a required disclosure, and it kind of protects the county of El Paso. I, I routinely get emails from other agencies trying to provide advice and analysis, and we just let them know that George K. Baum is our point of contact, and we deal through them. So this kind of helps us in disclosing that to the other firms.
Approved. Commissioner Pettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number eight, receive a presentation from the county's financial advisor regarding current market conditions and a quarterly update of the county's long-term debt portfolio.
Well, thank you once again for approving our contract. We're very excited, honored to continue to move forward with you. The county is my number one priority and my team's number one priority, and we're excited to be back here for another quarterly update to provide you with a market, look at what's going on with your bond portfolio, as well as perhaps some future opportunities. Have a presentation we prepared for you. You've seen this in the past. We'll start with a look at your current debt portfolio. Currently, the county has approximately 177 million of outstanding bonds. Originally, those were issued in an amount of 320 million. So you all have done a great job of paying those off on a timely basis. There has not been any new money issued in quite some time, but we have been able to take care of an advantage of some of the refunding opportunities. And that right-hand column up top is where we list your call dates or the ability for you to prepay your bonds early. That's when we identify if you can have refundings or refinancings for debt service savings. We did one in December with you, and that was really the last one that was, really made sense to get in there and save some, some dollars for you. The next call date coming up is 2019, as you'll see on your Series, let's see, 2016 C Bonds. However, there's only about 1.3 million remaining on that, so we're not anticipating that that's going to be an opportunity here when that comes due. It also has a 2.9% interest rate, so you're already in a nice low rate on that one.
Really quickly, on the, on the non-callable, is that locked in at a specific interest rate? Is that what showed under the coupon range, or?
That is correct, Judge. So those are fixed interest rates. As a reminder, and also just a notification, your tax-exempt municipal bonds are sold in serial bonds. So each different year is actually a different bond, and so that's why you see a different, difference in interest rates. One year, you pay 5%, the next year, you may pay 5.125. They are not fluctuating, you're not at risk of those, moving above those rates that were locked in at the time of sale, though.
And is that a pretty healthy split to do the 4258, almost a, almost a 50/50 on callable and non-callable?
It is. We'd like to obviously see more non-callable opportunities. As I was explaining, you, you all did a really good job over the last few years working with us to refund and refinance a lot of your callable bonds. Once you refinance and you get below approximately 10 years remaining in your, in your final maturity, they, they tend to become non-callable. So that the investors and the market out there tends to give you about 10 years to call bonds. Investors want to hold your bonds for at least 10 years without having them prepaid or you coming back and paying them off early. That is part of some of the terms they like to see in order to provide you with a low interest rate. They want to know that they're going to receive that interest for approximately 10 years. So that is one reason you see the non-callable items there. Those two up top have a final maturity in 2022. The one further down in, that, the Series 2017 that matures in 2032 is non-callable, but you'll see that it has such a low interest rate, and it was also a state infrastructure bank loan that did not have that option.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is a look at your annual debt service payments coming up over the full portfolio of your, of your loans and bonds. You'll see that the final maturity is in 2032. We try and maintain level debt service so that you are able to budget accordingly for your payments coming up on an annual basis. It also helps us maintain a level, steady tax rate for your taxpayers and citizens. What this doesn't look at is the rise in your assessed valuation. So as your tax base and valuation of all the property within El Paso County begins to rise, that tax rate will actually begin to fall if you maintain the same payment. So each year, when your new assessed valuation comes in, we work with the auditor's office, with budget office, to take a look at what your future capacity may be. Working with, with Mr. Dion and Mr. Utterback in the auditor's office, we're expecting that assessed valuation to come in this coming week. And so next time we're in front of you, we'll have those new valuations, and we'll be presenting to you an analysis on what that capacity may be. In addition to that valuation growth, we always try and work in these step downs that provide you with some opportunity as well. So you'll see from 2022 to 2023, there's a step down in your amount of bonds you're paying of approximately $4 million. That presents a great opportunity for you. As well as further out, in 2020, in 2033, virtually all of your bonds start to fall off, and there's some good opportunities there to, to fill in and, and take care of some projects. This is a look at your historical assessed valuation and property tax rates, going back to 2003, starting with the top left-hand column. You can see that y'all have had great, steady growth over the years. As you've grown in size, the last four or five years have been, you'll see that percentage start to decline because your, your tax base is so large. But over the last few years, you've seen a, a nice one to approximately 4% growth rate. In discussions with your auditor's office and budget office, it sounds like you're in line for another growth of similar, of similar results. line for another growth of similar results. One thing I want to point out that we added this time around, so you can also see in the middle in the INS rate column, this represents the amount of debt service that your citizens are paying. You can see since 2012, that rate has been falling, pardon me, since 2014 was the high spot and it's been falling since. But we went and added on this past time in the final column to the right, debt as a percentage of your assessed valuation. And this is the column that represents the amount of debt burden that your individual taxpayers and the value within your county are paying. And this is one I thought would paint a good picture for you all to see that you do continue to reduce that as a portion of your total valuation. So last year, you were at 23.42. Back in 2003, it was nearly 46.75. So a good reduction in your outstanding debt and the amount of that burden on your tax base. All right, I'll get into some headlines. It's been a fairly quiet quarter since I've spoken to you as far as the market headlines. We continue to keep an eye on the trade wars. It doesn't seem that that rhetoric is dying down anytime soon, both with China, but we also continue to monitor NAFTA very closely and how that will affect the El Paso County community as well as your rating, your credit rating that we help you maintain, obviously will be looked at closely by those rating agencies. The stock markets continue to do fairly well, continue to show bullish signs of growth. And then the other big headline is that the Fed actually continues to talk about raising the short-term borrowing rate or the Fed funds rate. So that, still expectations by the market that we're going to see two more increases this calendar year. So just this past week, you start to see the administration and Trump's office actually saying, you know, they're not wanting these interest rate rises from the Fed. So starting to see a little bit of, maybe some pressure from the administration's office. We'll see how the Fed responds with that. Some other looks and charts, talking about those headlines on the top right chart there, that's looking at the leading economic indicators that point to growth. This is not the trajectory of the stock market, but rather those leading economic indicators, which is a good sign of continued growth. On the left chart, that's the volatility index. It's, you know, fairly steady in spite of some of those trade tensions. So we do see many signs that continue to point to those growth factors. Here in Texas, the state of Texas has been having some record sales tax growth in the receipts. We're seeing from the comptroller's office, a chart there on the top right, month over month, very strong growth. So we hope to see that here within the county as well and at the city level. And then with, there was a Supreme Court decision here recently saying that some of the online retailers and the internet sales are going to be able to, any of those sales cross state lines, we'll also have to pay those sales tax. So while the county doesn't directly receive those, we do expect there to be economic growth because of that.
Do you all track commodities that could see a significant spike in cost because of the trade war that is brewing? And I ask that only in that, you know, oil, you know, our road projects and others, should we be preparing to see cost way above what we've planned for over the last several years? And I'm not sure if you all track that or not, or if you keep an eye on that and kind of could give us any heads up on what you're seeing?
Yeah. We don't ourselves track commodities, whether it be oil and gas or steel and some automobile production. We do look at kind of a broader economic view. The rating agencies are looking closely at that. You know, personally, we do keep an eye on the news and how it would affect the region. But we can look to get some reports for you that maybe dives deeper into that and can present that next round, or I can send it to you directly in the court.
That'd be helpful. I appreciate it.
Let's see, across the state, we do see some growth in bonding going on, not just at the county level, but at the city level, at the school district level. As you're very aware, a lot of the burden continues to fall to the local governments, with not as much help coming from state level and federal level. So we're seeing that growth a little bit faster than maybe the growth in your tax base and the assessed valuation. So, and that's on a state level. As that chart presented a few minutes ago, represented to you, your tax burden has actually been falling as a county. And then we continue to see a little bit of a change going to the final point here on this slide in our investor base because of the tax reform of 2017 and the change in the tax rate, not only for corporations, but really in a lot of the commercial banks from that 35% tax rate to 21% tax base, we're seeing a little bit of a change there. Some more detailed numbers, I won't dive into a lot of these because it has been pretty steady here. We continue to see good participation in municipal bonds. They're outperforming treasuries and corporate bonds as well as some of the emerging markets. So we do see good participation. We're seeing nice rates and opportunities within the municipal market. And again, good opportunity for the take on some of those projects. If we continue to see those rises in the short-term interest rates, as we discussed, we may continue to get some of that flattening of the yield curve. I addressed this with you in April for the last quarterly update I provided. If we get to an inverted yield curve, it's not a great thing and that can be a sign of future slowdown in the economy and perhaps not necessarily a recession, but maybe a retraction of some growth. Look at the 20-year, look at the interest rates. We are at the right side of the chart there. The blue represents the 10-year U.S. Treasury. The green dotted line is where the AAA MMD or the bond market is. The solid line there, the gray and pink, represents the 20-year averages. So you can still, you can see that we're still well below those averages. And again, that reflects that environment I was discussing with you as far as being able to tackle some projects at a good price. This is the flow into and out of municipal bond funds. The green representing inflows. We've seen good inflows here over the last year and a half or so. That reddish-orange dip there just prior to the 2017 was after the election, the national presidential election, when we saw a ton of money flowing to the stock markets and out-of-bond funds. Since then, we have good participation activity and a lot of demand for municipal bonds. Credit spreads continue to be fairly strong. This represents where do you stand or where do folks that maybe don't have a AAA rating sit compared to that AAA? So the different, the purple, green and blue represent AA, single A and triple B type rates. Y'all are a double A credit and trading approximately 20 basis points higher than a AAA-type credit. A look around the state and the counties and the bond issuance that's gone on the past quarter. You can see there is good activity out there with Texas counties, seeing some road bonds, some toll roads, so some transportation is big and then some other standard geo-bonds which are going to represent your essential purpose type projects to the county. Talked about that flattening yield curve, the purple there on top, that line over the blue is where we are this year compared to last year. So you can see long-term interest rates in the 30-year range have not changed a whole lot, whereas the short end has really come up quite substantially, approximately 60 basis points. What that means for us is there's some real opportunity. You don't have to pay a lot of extra interest for your longer-term new projects. When you look out 30 years, you can actually get that for approximately the same price as a 15-year bond. So when you look at longer useful-life type projects, whether it be roads or water and sewer systems that really last a long time, when we pair that debt financing with the users of a project, meaning if a project can last 30 years and people are going to be using it over the next 30 years, it makes sense to do a 30-year debt financing so that those future users are the ones paying for that project. So not a whole lot of increase though, is the point of this slide, in interest cost from about 15 to 30 years. So with that, some considerations, I talked to you about the expected rise in your assessed valuation or your tax base, meaning that, you know, there's been a lot of good appreciation and growth within the county. And if you keep your tax rate steady, it's going to produce more revenue and capacity for some of these projects. That is the general concept. We'll be back with you next quarter, once we have that final AV to present some options. We'll be working with Ms. Keller and the auditor's office and budget and finance to evaluate what you have on your list. A little update, as I know the stormwater and transportation is a big priority for the county and you've set aside some money within your M&amp;O and general fund. We wanted to just take you through this once more quickly. The penny set aside that the policy and the court has determined represents about $4 million annually. We're working with you to help identify how to pay for some projects for your community. Transportation has a similar setup. You've seen this presentation before. We did put it back here for your reference again. If you're to utilize that $4 million that comes through on an annual basis, it could equate to approximately $76 million on the front end if you decided to leverage that stream of revenue here today in a one-time issuance. Or if you wanted to do a series of issuances, we've provided you with an option here every two years producing approximately $12.5 million. Of course, as those numbers solidify, we'll revise that and work with staff. With that, I'll pause for any questions or conversation that the court would like to engage in.
Hagerty?
You discussed at the beginning about our ability to do a lot of good refinancing of bond debt and that has been taken away by the federal government. Are you hearing anything about us that changing or is that pretty much going to be set in stone for a while?
So I believe you're referring to the tax reform of 2017. That took away your ability to advance refund bonds, which means refinance bonds in front of that call date prepayment option. There is activity going on in Washington, D.C., trying to get that back onboard. I've not heard any new news of the last, of late. When it was first presented, probably in the January, February timeframe, there was some momentum there and I believe it will occur, but I don't have an update on the timing or really there hasn't been any new dialogue that I've heard in the last couple few months.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. I don't think we have to take any action on this except the report or the presentation. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you. Item number nine, litigation, justice and law enforcement. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the renewal of the district attorney's information management system interlocal governmental agreement with the city of El Paso fiscal year 2019, which includes no budget increase over the fiscal year 2017 or fiscal year 2018 budget. Contract number 2018-0397.
Good morning.
Good morning, County Judge. Commissioners, Karen LaRose. I'm the First Assistant District Attorney. This is an item for the renewal of the DIMs interlocal with the city of El Paso. My normal course of action is to get information from the auditor's office as to whether the budget is still adequate for the function that DIMs provides. And I've been informed that it was adequate. The only changes you'll see in the body of the interlocal is that it is expected that we will move from ILEADS to Web RMS. And in order to keep it current, we've included both items in the interlocal until we get to the new application of Web RMS. Other than that, there are no other changes, substantive changes in the interlocal and we're asking for your approval of the interlocal. If it is approved, we're going to ask for two originals to be signed so that the county can have an original signed copy as well as the city of El Paso.
Move to approve?
Second. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Have a good afternoon.
Item number 10, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the fiscal year 2019 statement of grant award from the Texas Indigent Defense Commission funding the Public Defender Mental Health Litigation and Advocacy Unit for fiscal year 2019 in the amount of $623,432. A 40% grant match in the amount of $415,622 is required for the second year of grant funding and the Department of Budget and Fiscal Policy will account for the match in the fiscal year 2019 budget. Contract number 2018-0437.
Morning.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners, Ms. Keller, Mr. Bishop. We have managed to bond out roughly 54% of our mental health clients from between October and the end of June. A lot of these bonds significantly were straight PR bonds and we're attempting to increase that. And some of them were split bonds and we're trying to kind of get rid of split bonds because they have a money factor. And anytime you have a money factor with somebody, especially a mentally ill person, you're kind of guaranteeing that they're going to stay in jail because they don't have the money to bond out. That's why the public defenders are pointing them because they're out of money. So in any event...
Mr. Gunther, can I interrupt just for a second on the split bonds? As I understand it, that by having a split bond, there's more surveillance or there's more, we keep track of those individual people, but you're saying the other way around, we'll still maintain that, not control, but oversight?
Yeah, the PR bond has the same oversight whether it's in a split bond or without a split bond. The situation is that there's still a tendency to have this need to impose a money bond, cash or security, then to use the PR system to supervise the client if he gets out, but to make them come up with a money bond.
And if I may, hi me, that's something that Joel has been working on with the judiciary specifically to create a risk praxis, if you will, to identify what situations should require those higher types of bonds and which ones should qualify with a PR bond. And their next steps are to really work with the judiciary on implementing that system. There's been a lot of work that they've put in to identify when a, what type of bond should be required and now they just have to work with the judiciary to get it implemented. Is that correct, Joel?
Okay, thank you. I understand now that there's also even more supervision with the...
With a straight PR?
Yeah. Yes. Okay, thank you.
And we've, in the same time period, October 17th through June 18th, we've opened 724 misdemeanor cases and 971 felony cases. We've closed 327 misdemeanors and 336 felonies. Now, the unit, the average over this time period was 80 misdemeanors a month and 108 felonies a month, but if we subtract... felonies a month, but if we subtract the transfers into the unit from cases that we already had that were spread out across the rest of our docket, we're getting an average 54 misdemeanors and 104 felonies a month. And what's interesting about that is that it's interesting to observe that there's more felony clients that have mental health problems than misdemeanor proportionately. So the unit is staffed pretty well completely right now. There's a lawyer from the mental health unit assigned to each one of the other trial units where the cases get filed. We're having good communication. Our social workers do an excellent job of helping lawyers define the mental health issues and connect the client and the patient with community services so that they can get healthy enough to work through, to go out into the community, take care of their families, and get well. There was one young lady, seriously ill, had felony charges, and she had a baby while she was incarcerated and who had problems. The child was born with all kinds of defects. And in any event, after a long time of battling with getting her set up with mental health services, she's out, the felonies are dismissed, and the misdemeanors are working out. That's just one example of the things that are doing. The lawyer that's assigned to the jail started the work, and then when the cases were indicted, the other lawyers finished it. So they're doing a lot of good, hard work, and it's extremely functional, and it's helping us in general handle the rest of the caseload.
Joel, did you want to add anything?
Good morning, Commissioners. Joel Bishop, Executive Director of Justice. I would just add to that, that we are working on a way to do some preliminary evaluation with the outside analysts to come in and evaluate the efficacy and other measures of this project. So hopefully by next year, as we move forward with this, if you approve it, we'll have more outside perspective of the metrics and some of the basic things. We won't be able to get to things like recidivism or anything like that in the next year or two because it's too soon. We've only implemented, this has been going strong for a little over six months now. But I did want to mention that we are working on ways to try to get this evaluated from an outside source, perhaps as part of next year's recidivism project, so we will have some good, very good outcome data for you to let you know how it's going in the future.
Meanwhile, my lawyers are working to secure the release of our clients as early as possible from jail, under circumstances where we can assure that everybody's safe, including my client. Ask that you approve the signature of this grant award.
Commissioners, any questions?
Second.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 11. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Program's fiscal year 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program Local Solicitation Award for the county of El Paso and the city of El Paso in the amount of $218,827 for the grant period beginning October 1st, 2016 through September 30th, 2020. There is no county match required. Contract number 2018-0405.
Morning, Judge. Commissioners. Deputy Edgar Baca with El Paso County Sheriff's Office. On this item, today we're asking the court to accept a fiscal year 17 JAG grant we applied for and was awarded in the amount of $98,472.15. Of that, $78,479.84 will be used in the purchase of Motorola APX 6000 radios, replacing the Motorola XTS radios, which are reaching the end of life in 2019. These radios will be utilized to retrofit the current radio systems that Constable's office are utilizing right now. The remaining balance of $19,992.31 will be used to purchase TASER items for training, certification, recertification, and batteries.
Move to approve? Second. It's free money. Correct. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Have a good afternoon. Appreciate it.
Item number 12, Health and Social Services. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the demolition agreement for seven mobile home structures with Mirador Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of $52,219.11 for the demolition of dilapidated mobile homes under the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs Colonia Self-Help Center Program Mobile Home Replacement Activity. Funds are available in SG Colonia Self-Help Operating Expenses. Contract number 2018-0383.
Good morning, County Judge. Commissioners, Arvin Valenzuela, Community Services Department. On June 11th, you approve the award of a vendor, Mirador Enterprise Services, for the demolition of seven dilapidated homes that we will be replacing under the Colonia Self-Help Center Program. This item is just to approve the agreement that solidifies those terms as awarded under the bid. As soon as, if approved, the agreement will be executed, and the vendor will begin the services in conjunction with coordination with the Public Works Department to complete this project.
Questions, Commissioners?
To approve? Second. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Item number 13, Public Works. Postpone July 16, 2018. Approve and authorize the closure of section of Mankato Road to mitigate flooding issues that might arise during monsoon season. The closure would be from July 16, 2018 through September 31, 2018.
And I know we have several guests here on this item. If you'd like to speak on the item, if you would please, we've got some forms up here. If you'd fill them out, they'll bring them up, and then I'll call you all up in the order that you submit the form. So if you'd like to speak, please do that. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Norma Palacios with the Public Works Department. I would like, with the court's authorization, to amend the item to include an authorized public work staff to acquire right of entries to remove material in relation to the closure. If approved, this would allow us to close the road and start working on the arroyo to remove some of the sand that we feel would make this project what we need to address issues that we might have should we have an event. As the court will recall, I was here last week talking about this item. The residents in the area had requested that we build the berms. We built some berms last year and the project, but this happened after the fact. And while it did assist the constituents, I know that some of them have concerns, and so if you want, they can address you to court now. But we are recommending that if we're going to work on this project, that we get authorization to do it as soon as possible and not wait until we have an event. Because if we have an event, it'd be hard for us to take care of this and everything else that's happening at the same time. And so with that, I'll turn it over to speak on the item.
And so you're asking to amend it. I know last week we spoke about just creating the berms, closing the road temporarily, and now you want to acquire the right-of-way?
Not right-of-way. We want a right-of-entry. What that means is we want to be able to, because acquiring the right-of-ways is going to take some more time, and if we have an event, it'd be hard for us to get in there and remove some of the sand from the arroyo. So what we're asking, a right-of-entry, that would allow us to be able to work within their properties, just in case it takes time to acquire the properties, and it will, because we are hiring surveyor and then identify exact location of the property. So this is going to be a longer, a long process. But if we had a right-of-entry, we can already get into their properties and remove the sand that we need and build the berms.
Commissioners, any initial questions, or if you'd like to hear from...
Just for clarification, an event is flooding, is what you're referring to?
Yes, sir. Any flooding event.
And while we're correcting the item, we need to change the date also, correct? Because we're not closing the date as of July 16th?
Yes, because we weren't able to do it last week, so we would, the closure would take effect as soon as the court approves it.
Right. Do we want to talk?
Yeah. So we do have one member of the public signed up to speak on this item, Julie Stowell Moss? I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
Yes.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
I am the resident that lives directly next to the arroyo in the picture, so the bottom house there, so I'm the one that is the most directly affected. We, the residents, have concerns about closing the street currently if the arroyo is not cleaned beforehand. Right now, that arroyo is 10 to 12-foot high, full of sand, and it's only cleaned back about 50 yards, maybe a little less. So the clean line is not even to my house, so if there is a flooding event with sand and water, the likelihood that that sand and water comes over and takes my house is a very large risk. So why we asked for the county, for Ms. Palacios to change the order was to ask you to please grant right-of-entry so that they could get in and clean it and then close it. Because right now, every time the clouds build above I-10, we all have anxiety attacks, we all go shut gates, we all, I have a six-foot concrete wall in front of that house, or rock wall in front of that house, and right now, it's starting to cave because of the continued flooding of sand. So the water that we received last year that spurred this action, which we, I can't believe we waited a whole year, but the flooding that, and the mud that moved last year was fractional compared to the flooding that happened in 2012, 2014, and 2015. 2012, that mud and that water moved our house and had to be reset and rejoined, and it's a mobile home, and it all had to be fixed. And we, the residents, have had to pay to remove it all every single time. So we definitely want to close the road, but we don't want to do that unless the county can come immediately and clean that out first, so that there's passage for the sand and the water to the water districts arroyo. Because if not, if it caves, if it goes over the top, the two houses, the two houses at 12284 and the two houses at 12308 Mankato will both be covered in sand and water. Those are the two houses on the left side of your picture, just where the berms are actually touching.
And so the item as amended, you feel much more comfortable with because it will allow for us to go and then alleviate what you have?
Right. We don't agree as it stood previously last week because the sand is actually, that arroyo, you can see it looks flat. It should be 10-foot deep. It looks flat because it's full of sand at the top. So when the sand and the water hit, what has not been cleaned out, it's just going to rise and come over the top and then come over the top of my six-foot wall, because that sand right now is another four or five feet above my wall. So once it fills, it's going to come over the top, and then I'm going to be homeless. So we're asking that we amend before you approve, so that they can come and clean it and then close it. But we're nearing that week in 2012. It was the last week of July. 14, the same thing. 15, the same thing. Last year, it was just a little bit later, but we're near that time, and we're concerned that we've waited for a year. We're just now addressing it, the beginning of monsoon season, and so they're telling us that there is a great deal of time. We may have to wait a week for this paperwork, the amendment and everything, to get signed before they'll even touch it. The forecast for the next five days is sunny, and then what happens after that? So we are very anxious and concerned about what happens. We're the houses that are in the low-lying land.
Appreciate you signing up to speak in the perspective. That is helpful.
Yes, sir.
And I know there are several folks here that weren't here last week, and I want to speak and let you all know that, I know it often feels like the county isn't necessarily engaging in the stormwater or flooding issue, but I can tell you, over the last year, we have really tried to delve into this as much as possible. The court last budget set aside a significant, well, not enough money, unfortunately, but some money to start to alleviate this issue. We have applied for several grants with the state of Texas to help build out some of the projects that we hope will help alleviate some of the water that's coming from upstream. We have yet to hear back from them, but, Norma, how many, did we apply for? 11 projects. And we've also been engaging with the El Paso Water Utility to update a 2010 plan that outlines several projects that needed to get done in order to help provide some relief to the residents and the county when it comes to stormwater. That plan, unfortunately, when it was devised in 2010, flooding was occurring on the far west side, and it didn't really take into account the significant increase in flooding on the far east side and the new arroyos that have developed over the last seven years. And so we have already approved updating that plan to give us additional perspective on how to address these issues moving forward. So I know that that doesn't necessarily bring any comfort immediately, but I can tell you that the court really is trying to do its best in taking a holistic view on this issue. And I'm hoping that although perhaps a little late in the game, that this will help come the rains that we know will be coming over the next several months. And so we appreciate you taking the time to come out here and be with us and share your perspective, and if there's anything that we can do moving forward to help our Public Works Department, and we all are ready to stand to help. So... Any other comments? Ms. Palacios, it sounds like you all are okay with moving forward with the amendment, and I'm hoping that we can get this work started as soon as possible, once everything flows through legal and we get it, we get it done.
Yes, sir. This was our recommendation, to include this, so that we can move on it immediately.
Does that require participation from the property owners? I had assumed so.
Property owners? Yes, sir.
I would just advise that for those that are here, and if you have any other owners that will have to sign this right-of-entry, that the sooner you can get that paperwork to us and the sooner we finish the process. So... Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Perez?
You know, thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for the residents for being here. You know, stormwater, these projects are often very complex and very difficult, and I know one of the issues, it comes from liability that arises when we improve a particular property. Has that been carefully assessed as, because it's one thing to build a berm on Mankato, and I'm very well aware of the problems that are on that road. It is very serious, but it's another to then start cleaning out the arroyo, because I think the county assumes increased liability for their property should the event, should it flood. Has that been assessed?
And so that question was asked, and Eric can probably address it.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Eric Morales, Assistant County Attorney. Yes, sir, we're working with Public Works to look at that issue, and that's one of the reasons, for example, on the right-of-entry, why we're asking for the right-of-entry specifically, so that we can, well, Public Works can get in there and have the right to work with some of the material and the structures are there. And I think that Public Works also is taking, trying to take a long-term approach to this, a long-term perspective on how to come up with a, well, a long-term solution on this. We're aware of the concern, and we are certainly working with them to address those issues.
So there are very legitimate concerns by the residents regarding flooding and the inundation of sand from the arroyo. And some of the properties that I visited last year that were flooded, the county currently doesn't have liability for those properties, but after improvements are made...
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing you.
So whenever there's a flooding event, and let's say that there are homes that had property damage last flooding season.
Right.
But currently, the arroyo, from as far as my understanding, is not a county property.
That's right.
But so, once the improvements are made, let's say the county then cleans out the dam and a similar flooding event occurs, and then there is sand and soot and, or sand and water that doesn't inundate a property, will the county then be liable for that property?
Well, I think in this case, Commissioner, is that we are looking at this to prevent, one of the reasons, we are aware, we're not, we're not trying to improve a private property. What we're trying to do is prevent flooding of public property, which is the road. And so I think there would be some immunities there that we could assert, because, again, this has happened more than once. We're aware of it, and we're trying to do it in a way that would protect public health and safety in anticipation of it. Yeah, no, and I appreciate your concern about it, and certainly that's one of the things that we're looking at, is what immunities we, in a key point, it is, it's, we don't want to make a bad situation worse.
And Commissioner, I, you weren't here last week, but we had another item related to Mankato that addressed us acquiring the right-of-way. And so the court approved that, so that we could create a channel, and that, that point, the county would be responsible for that channel and the maintenance. That was another item that was approved by the court last week, and we're working on that.
And at that same time, I have the same question, Commissioner, in terms of liability, what that meant for the county. And so I'm hoping that, I'm hearing that... And so, I'm hoping that, I'm hearing that we have delved into it enough to feel comfortable enough with making these improvements without additional liability or any liability to the county.
Well, Judge, you know, there's.
There's always.
That's right, there's, there's always somebody. But we are, I think, working with Public Works to, to make sure that this is done in a way that doesn't bring any more problems upon the county.
Norma, last week, I think you mentioned it, but how tall will those berms be?
Well, I'm farnied on this with the Public Works Department. Basically, the existing arroyo has been filled up with, with sand and debris right now. So, what we're looking at is to build an eight-foot structure, similar to what we did last year. So, that is eight-foot above the existing ground. Because of the depression of the roadway, it comes out to about a 10-foot tall from the existing roadway, and elevation of 10-foot to be able to capture all the water and sediment going through that point.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
And just for the record, just to make sure that the, the agenda item is corrected to read, it would be approve and authorize the closure of a section of Mankana Road, Mankato Road, to mitigate flooding issues that might arise during monsoon season. In relation to the closure, authorize the county Public Works Department to acquire right of entry in the area to remove material. The closure would be from July 23rd, 2018, through September 31st, 2018.
I'll amend my, my motion as described.
Thank you.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 14, as corrected by the county attorney's office, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the memorandum of agreement regarding construction of Emerald Pass Boulevard with North Town Village Joint Venture and Hunt Mission Ridge LLC. Contract number 2018-0087.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Gilbert Saldana with Public Works. This MOA is, or memorandum of agreement, is an agreement for the alignment of the Emerald Pass, approximately a one-third mile segment just south of Peyton Drive. The MOA is between the county, Hunt Mission Ridge LLC, and North Town Village Joint Venture, which are the adjacent landowners of the, of the alignment. This segment of Emerald Pass will provide important connectivity for the area as it continues to develop. Should the county, in the, the future, decide to construct this segment of Emerald Pass, the MOA would provide the county with the necessary right-of-way, drainage infrastructure, and the design of the improvements. So, I guess with that, we recommend approval of this item.
Move to approve?
Second. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 15, purchasing. Rescind the award of four tandem dump trucks and four water trucks to Doggett Freightliner of El Paso, Texas through the Texas Smart Buy contract number 072-A1 in the amount of $974,493.40. An award to Doggett Freightliner of South Texas, Converse, Texas, through the Texas Smart Buy contract number 072-A1 in the new amount of $970,756. Funding is available in general fund, road and bridge flood, flood contention cap-out vehicles.
Morning.
Good morning, Jose Lopez, Assistant Purchasing Agent, County of El Paso. This is a little housekeeping on the approval, on the court order to utilize the Texas Smart Buy contract using Doggett Freightliner of El Paso, utilizing the Texas Smart Buy. Tech, Doggett Freightliner of El Paso will be facilitating the purchase of this, but since we're using the state contract and the Texas Smart Buy system, we actually need the award and the purchase order made out to Doggett Freightliner of South Texas. They, they are the ones that were awarded the state contract. Doggett El Paso will be facilitating it, they'll be receiving the trucks and, and prepping them and getting them to us, this was approved for the stormwater projects. So, I would like to ask you to approve the award to Doggett Freightliner of South Texas, and so we can move forward on this project.
Commissioner Perez?
Who, who is typically responsible for identifying the correct entity that gets payment? Is it ultimately the responsibility?
It was our responsibility, it was a clerical error, they didn't notice that, since, since a lot of the paperwork was coming from Doggett El Paso, they didn't notice it should have been Doggett South Texas.
And is, is this going to change the timelines in which the equipment is delivered to the county?
No, we've already been in contact with Doggett South Texas and with Doggett El Paso, and as soon as we get the approval, we'll enter the purchase order into the system, and they'll start processing the, the trucks to get them sent over here.
Thank you.
Do we, when do we anticipate the equipment starting to arrive?
That I'll have to check on, I, I've been more involved on the other part.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Hope and Staple Fleet Operations Director. Currently, we're looking at 240 to 300 days per the vendor. They are aware that we need these, but at the end of the day, bidding it out would only extend it even further. Now, that's their default answer to us. We're working with them to try to get it as quick as possible.
Hope, so you, did you say almost 300 days?
240 to 300, yes, Commissioner.
Wow, that's a long time to wait for the equipment.
The issue is that the, the price that we're, we're paying, a lot of this equipment is not just sitting on the ground anywhere, because we have specific requirements through Public Works. So, a lot of these vehicles, for instance, would come with like a sleeper cab or a double cab that's sitting on a lot somewhere, well, we don't need that. So, a lot of it is going to have to, either they're going to find it for us or they're going to have to build it at the factory. But the timeline they gave us is 240 to 300 days.
Thank you. And I, I thought that the, one of the purposes of going with the buy board was to get this equipment quickly, because the original timeline that we were given was that it would be about a month before we get this equipment in time for this year's water, in time for this year's monsoon season, so that's no longer the case.
When we started working with Doggett El Paso, their intent was to try to source them, look across the country, and the new vendor, Doggett South Texas, is doing that. Again, this is just their default timeline, because they know if they give me a timeline and, and they don't deliver on it, I'm going to hold them accountable for that. So, a lot of them will go with a default timeline, but hopefully, again, they'll be able to find these freight liners nationwide and, and find what we need to meet our specifications.
The 240 days is max?
240 to 300, ma'am, max, but it could, we could get it earlier. That's just their default answer to us, because again, they know if they give me a timeline of two months or three months or 30 days, and they don't deliver it, they're going to hear from us.
But I just hope you can look into the delay, because I mean, we, we had purchased this equipment with the understanding that it was going to be done in time for this year's monsoon season, and that isn't the case. And it's something that we conveyed to the public and to the media.
If we get approval to move forward with Doggett South Texas, we will enter it into the system. We're already working with Mr. Wright over in Converse, Texas right now, and he's aware of the urgency of it. So, once we get it in the system, we should get a tentative delivery date probably by the end of this week. Okay, it's a matter of putting together the right parts, and I don't think it's going to be as long as 240 days, but we won't know until we actually get everything down on paper.
We could just get an update on that, once we have that, that date, that'd be great, thank you. I believe there's a motion in a second.
The motion to rescind, and then, of course, the motion to, to award.
Nobody's made a motion?
I thought, I thought we did, was there not a motion?
If there's no motion.
Not, I didn't get a motion.
Move to rescind.
Be two parts, two motions, let's do two motions. The first motion would be motion to rescind, please.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then, the second part of that item would be motion to award to Doggett Freightliner of South Texas.
Move to approve?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 16, rescind the award of three tractor trucks to Doggett Freightliner of El Paso, Texas through HEAC contract number HT0618 in the amount of $330,636. An award to Houston Freightliner of Houston, Texas for $330,636 through HGAC contract number HT0618. Funding is available in general fund, road and bridge flood containment cap-out vehicles.
This is the exact same thing. They were working with Doggett with the dump trucks and the water trucks on the, on these tractor trucks. Also, they're working with him. It was awarded through the HDAC contract, but the, the contract was actually awarded to Freightliner Houston, which he's working with to get the trucks in. So, this would be another rescind the award and award to Houston Freightliner.
Joe, I've got to say that it seems like we make, the county goes into a contract with a local vendor, then we're surprised to, to learn that, that it's not local at all.
Well, no, you, there was no intent to make it seem like we were doing business with a local vendor. Doggett Freightliner of El Paso was working with the other Freightliner distributorships and the ones that have the major contracts. It's kind of like Silsby, Ford, and I can't think of their one right now, that do most of the patrol cars and stuff. When we buy off of the state contract, Shumali or Casa or one of them will, will facilitate the job, but we're actually utilizing the state contract. In this case, he was working with us to, to try to help us get them quickly, and he is going to be the one facilitating the contract, who will be getting, in essence, a percentage of what this sale is. But these are contracts that were awarded, one to the state, and this one to Houston Galveston Cooperative, and he was utilizing those so that we wouldn't have to bid these out because of the urgency. Now, in the Doggett one.
And Joe, if I can interrupt, I apologize, but would the county have done better if we just dealt with Houston directly and eliminated that middleman who's getting a percentage?
Um, no, actually, there, it would still, we're, we're still paying the same amount. What we're paying out of the Houston-Galveston contract is what Houston Freightliner would do, and what would sell to any government entity, whether it is, is the setup, the delivery, and making sure all the options are there and working. It's not being done in Houston, it's being done over here in El Paso by Doggett. And so, it doesn't affect the price at all. If it did, then we wouldn't be able to utilize that contract, we'd have to bid it out. Where, and this is where it got a little confused with, with Doggett, but no, we're not getting charged any extra for having a middleman. He's just facilitating it for the, actually, Freightliner nationwide.
And I can understand that, but it seems like there's a lack of transparency. This is tax money we're, we're spending, and we are doing business with a local vendor, thinking it's that local vendor, but apparently, we were surprised, were we not?
We, no, we weren't, actually.
Joe, if I could, I think what I understood, the way it was explained to me, was we went out and looked for what, what companies were out there that already had a buy board or a cooperative bid for these particular products. When we saw Doggett, and I, Hope, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we found that there was a Doggett El Paso, and they indicated that they could work with us off those bid prices. Well, come to find out, we couldn't use the, by law, we can't go directly with the local vendor, because the bid buy board didn't list Doggett El Paso. It listed Doggett, the other one. And so, you can't just go to another, like, if it says Arlington Ford, you can't just go to El Paso Ford, you have to specifically use the one that was on that bid list. But we were under the impression, and in speaking with the local vendor, that we could go work directly with him.
And, and I don't believe that there was any subterfuge or anything like that. We do this with Motorola, we're doing this right now on their big P-25 and so forth, where we're cutting the PO to Motorola, but RTC is the one doing all the work and doing all the installation. The PO is to Motorola in care of RTC, we do that with furniture and with other things.
Yeah, but you can't do this with Doggett, you can't cut the check to Doggett like you just compared. There are two different situations.
Well, see, again, we don't, when we cut the check, we cut, we cut the check for equipment and so forth to Motorola. With the service portion is getting, getting charged to RTC, or getting paid to RTC. This is really, you know, no different than those K's. What happened here was, again, we, we were utilizing Houston-Galveston contract, we were utilizing the Texas Smart Buy contract. Now, we weren't aware that Doggett could not be included in the Texas Smart Buy one. In Houston, we knew after it was done, that really it needed to go to Houston Freightliner. The things that Mr., and I can't think of one, over at Freightliner at Doggett, he wasn't aware of the constraints on the state bid. So, when we started to order it, that's where they were saying, well, no, 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 this is not, and so, that's why we're here.
Good morning again, Commissioner, Judge Hope and Staple Fleet Operations Director. So, this is, let me kind of simplify this. So, when we try to buy anything, we go out and get quotes. Some of the quotes obviously came from Doggett El Paso, Russian Truck Enterprise, Border International. So, we compared those quotes. Doggett El Paso told us that, yes, in fact, they're a member of the cooperative contract. They were the lowest price, so obviously, we said, let's, let's roll with them. The, the Smart Buy is the only contract that the state actually is the one that issues the PO to the vendor. If, if Doggett had quoted us off of a different co-op, the deal would have went through. It's just that when they quote us, we got with the state to issue the PO, that's when we realized that, hey, it's not Doggett El Paso, it's actually Doggett Converse. So, like Joe said earlier, the price really, it actually went down by about $4,000, but that's kind of immaterial. The price didn't change. The only thing, the only constraint to us is extended this whole thing by a week or two to try to figure this out. But we get quotes all the time, and if a vendor says they're part of a contract, give us the contract number, again, with, with all the other cooperatives, it wouldn't have been an issue, but with the Smart Buy, the state is the one that actually issued the, the, and, and, and that's one of the reasons that I prefer not to really use the Texas Smart Buy, because their fee is actually the highest amongst any other cooperatives out there. It's just that the vendor quoted us, we needed the vehicles, so we went with it.
And the, is there a delay in the delivery of these vehicles?
Again, the Doggett Converse told us 240 to 300 days by default, but as Joe says, as soon as we get the PO issued, we have been in touch with them, letting them know the urgency that we need these vehicles.
So, so the same issue applies to item 16?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just to elaborate on what Hope and said, there's a fee for a Texas Smart Buy, but also, because you have to enter in their system, and it goes through their purchase order, their automated system. But when you do that, Texas Smart Buy, not just on these trucks, but on everything else, they make sure that everything is being honored, that they didn't tack on. that they didn't tack on a delivery charge, that they didn't, everybody who bids on that has already said, we're going to, we're not charging delivery, we're not charging, and that's where you get a lot of your savings. They will check that. They will make sure that you did not get charged that, and they will go back and they will reprimand the vendor and they will get you a refund if you were charged anything out of there. Like when we use their job order contracts, they will check the job order contracts and make sure they're using the right wages, make sure that they're not adding any clauses or claims that shouldn't be added because it's in the boilerplate with the state and they shouldn't add it. So that's a protection on using that. There is a fee, but they also look out that you're getting what you pay for. And in this case, we've used it many times. In this case, it was, again, we just need to clean up the paperwork and we're already working on trying to get the vehicles here.
Commissioner Perez?
I think one of the things that we were trying to determine previously was whether it was more advantageous to purchase this equipment outright or whether it was to to rent it, and the determination was made that it would be more timely if we purchased the equipment. Is that still the case?
I wasn't involved in the.
Question would be for Hopeton.
Commissioner, I think as far as leasing, the the benefit of owning it was if the the cost to lease over a long period would cost more and none of this equipment, or not all the equipment was readily available to lease. So we decided to buy it, seeing that we will own him and they would be in the fleet another fifteen to twenty years versus leasing.
I mean, I remember that when it came to the tractor trucks that they weren't available for lease, but I think in the other equipment, at least they were available. It may not have been, you know, as beneficial in terms of the timelines, because I remember there were some constraints regarding the time that it took to get this equipment to El Paso. But considering that now that we're looking at a potential three hundred day timeline, is leasing an option now that at least this equipment will be available come this monsoon season?
So one of the issue we ran into again when we looked at leasing, not all the vendors had what we needed and it's not like the equipment is going to be sitting there waiting for us to decide is it going to flood or not. Because the vendor who has the equipment is going to continue to lease to other, you know, other other people until our needs arise. One of the things Norma looked at was contracting it out from a company, I think out of Houston, to actually come in, the vehicles and the personnel. But they turn around and that also wasn't, you know, couldn't guarantee that if we lease this out, we're going to have the equipment or the personnel when we need them.
So is it not possible to have the leased equipment here in time for this monsoon season?
It's it's possible, Commissioner, but not, we would have to find multiple vendors with with multiple equipment who are willing to block off, you know, from July twenty-fifth to September, whatever. What I'm saying is if it floods tomorrow and we go out to lease, that equipment may or may not be there.
Hopeton, but we could get pricing on, so instead of leasing it as needed, we would lease it for the season.
Correct.
So could we get pricing on leasing it for the season and how how long would it take us to come up with that? That price to lease it from now until October, mid to late October? If we're not going to have it. And then, of course, if I imagine with a lease, if a piece of our equipment came in early, we could stop the lease on that piece and go to using our own.
One of the things, ma'am, we looked at also in leasing is the liability to to actually lease that equipment because if we damage any of it, and even the brief that I gave, I think the most I went out with was a two-week lease. It was pretty expensive, seventeen thousand, I believe, to eighteen thousand, to lease four pieces of equipment for a week or two versus now we're looking at two months. It's, it would add up. So my recommendation is to to buy it and hopefully it'll come in earlier. If it don't, just keep moving.
I think the recommendation is to buy, but I think meanwhile we can go back and find and identify different options that might work, see if they're willing to set equipment aside for us or maybe do a short-term lease, three months. Because I I think even as the equipment comes in, I don't know if they're willing to break that lease, but we can lease it for at least a couple of months. And I think we should evaluate all options. I think that's what we can come into to doing, to go in and see if we can do that.
Can, I mean, can we look at at doing both? Because obviously there's there's a concern about not having the equipment here in time for this season and, you know, it could be more costly for us to have to be reactive than than proactive. And so maybe we can look at, you know, leasing for the season, even though it's going to be an additional cost.
Right.
But it may be worth it.
Yes, sir. That's, and I think that's what, so we will continue moving on the buying. If the court approves, we'll continue moving with the purchase. But in the meantime, we would look at doing a short-term lease for, and even including if we need to, liability insurance in the in the cost of the lease, if our current, none of our policies would cover it. Actually, we probably could work with our insurance provider, our auto insurance provider, to give us coverage on those leased vehicles. Because our, we have a great relationship with them and reasonable pricing.
Ms. Keller, so just for reference, so on the insurance coverage, again, we only have liability. So if we, even if we have coverage and we damage it, it's still on us.
Okay, but we can buy liability on our vehicles through our insurer. I think it's, I might be wrong. I can't remember if it's T P S or if it's, I know, but they could quote us what it would cost to insure leased vehicles.
We'll work with Son.
Yes.
Motion to rescind.
Yes. Is it possible to do both the motion to rescind and the motion to approve?
Let's do both separately, just to make it clear for the record. So it would be a first motion to rescind, please.
Second.
I think no one's made the motion. Oh, you made the motion. Okay, perfect.
Does your motion, Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty. Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the next part of that would be a motion to award to Houston Freightliner of Houston, Texas.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty. Judge vote. Motion carries. Item number seventeen, approve and authorize the purchasing agent to reject all responses and end the procurement process for bid number one eight zero one six. Employ uniforms, juvenile uniforms, bedding and practice rifles for the juvenile probation department.
Jose Lopez, Assistant Purchasing Agent, County of El Paso. We were requested by the department to close this 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 bid. There was some omissions in the specifications, some changes they'd like to make. So they would like to just close the bid process and resubmit the bid.
A motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Grant applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the Commissioner's Court for final acceptance and approval. Item number eighteen, approve and authorize the submission of a letter of intent and grant renewal application for continuum of care homeless assistance program funds in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars to continue coordinated assessment services on behalf of the El Paso community for fiscal year twenty nineteen through twenty twenty. A twenty-five percent grant match is required.
Morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Joel Bishop with Executive Director of Justice and Community Services. What you have before you is a is a request to apply for the nineteen and twenty coordinated assessment grant, although we're still in the planning stage of of implementing this year's grant. And we've we have been presented from the community providers, many requests for the county to continue to administer the coordinated assessment, stay involved in this, not only this year, but at least a commitment to another year while we engage in further strategic planning, hopefully this fall and into next year with the city. Opportunities have have come up with the city to potentially use some city locations and resources within the next few weeks. We should have a plan for that. And hopefully within, in early August, we'll be able to come to the court with a cooperative presentation outlining how this will be implemented, not only for this year, but potentially for another year if this grant is approved. So we have the request here to go ahead and and approve us to apply with the understanding that we will come with a very detailed plan and key stakeholders from the community to share their support for the county doing this if the court approves, and the details of how that will be implemented. It seems as though this is the best option moving forward for that community. We don't have, as you've heard earlier on this year, the other options were not very well received within that community and and there is a large support. We have no one objected to the county moving forward with this, especially with the involvement and engagement of the city in this collaborative process. This does, the the match is mostly in-kind with about fifteen hundred that would come in cash from the county, but the rest would be in-kind with all the staff resources that we're putting into this and particularly in the oversight. Irene, did you have anything to add?
No, it's just that the grant match requirement can be in-kind and so like Joel said, it will be with in-kind staff salaries. We, Joel and I have been working a lot on this and we're going to dedicate some other in-house staff to to continue with with this program. The cash that will be necessary is a one percent fee that the county or every applicant that puts in this application through the HUD's collaborative applicant, that's a fee that the collaborative applicant charges to process this application on behalf of the community. And that's that fifteen hundred that Joel referred to.
I just, I just wanted to thank you all for for the work you're doing with this issue. You know, I think it's something that's that's so important for our our community, for the homeless community and and it's, I know it's, it can be difficult because because of, you know, some of some of the the issues that 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 we're facing among different groups that that also I think want to do good for this community, but but in different manners and and have different personalities. And so I just want to thank you all for for the work that you're doing with it, and I think it's important for the county to stay involved as well. And so I I'm going to go ahead and move to approve.
I want to second that as well, just because I know that it's such a big learning curve in terms of the different committees and coordinated care and assessment and the different actors involved, that it has not been easy on either one of you. And I think that the thought was that we were going to be out of this business, but it looks like it may be coming back. But I think in a much more coordinated effort with the city of El Paso, and so I think long term it will be good in terms of helping us stabilize the situation, but then find a greater solution in in the future. So thanks for, to both of you. And I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number nineteen, approve and authorize the Fleet Department to apply for the Texas Emissions Reduction Plan Grant from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars to replace approximately twelve heavy-duty vehicles with newer vehicles certified to emit less nitrate oxide.
Morning.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Hopeton, State with Fleet Operations Director. Again, this grant is under the Texas Emission Reduction Program or T E R P. The specific grant is the E-Rig Emission Reduction Incentive Grant. It allows to replace on-road or off-road equipment and vehicles. The grant allows up to eighty percent of the cost of each vehicle, so the the intent is the one point three million we just spent on the stormwater vehicles is to get some of that money back, up to eighty percent. Or if we do get the grant, use it to buy additional equipment. It will require us to turn in twelve older vehicles. And again, based on the the amount of reduction in emission from the old vehicle to the new vehicles, it's funded at seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars per ton of emission reduction.
Questions, Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout. Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number twenty, Budget and Finance. Approve Amendment Number Forty-One to the County of El Paso's twenty seventeen through twenty eighteen operating budget. This budgetary amendment will decrease grants by sixteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars, thus decreasing the County of El Paso's twenty seventeen through twenty eighteen overall operating budget of four hundred and eighty-eight million, nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three dollars and fifty-three cents to four hundred and eighty-eight million, nine hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-three cents.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Were there any questions on this week's budget amendment?
Commissioner Perez?
Thank you, Wally. Could you elaborate on the, I think there's some transfers for the, either contracted services to the downtown facility for medical purposes?
Yes, sir.
Contracted services.
So on Journal Number six sixty-three, we're doing an internal transfer from the jail annex to the detention facility, five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from the annex into detention. Part of the reason for that was the delay in the unit opening, opening the additional four hundred and thirty-two beds. So we had a greater percentage of inmates at the downtown detention facility. Additionally, we had planned within our contingencies, an amount of half a million dollars appropriated for possible medical contract changes with the facilities. And so those funds are coming out to cover those projected costs through the end of the fiscal year, and that amount was two hundred and eighteen thousand.
Do you know what the increase was for the one that over five hundred thousand you just mentioned?
Excuse me?
The changes in the contract? Do you know, were there, what were the changes specifically that resulted in the increase?
Well, part of part of the changes are, we have a step up, excuse me, no, the the population numbers don't change. It was just a increased cost related to the 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 jail contract overall. We had the appropriation set up in our contingency, but I don't, I'd have to double check and see if I get it. There was something that differs from that.
Does it have to be approved this week or can you?
I tell you what, if you want to lay it on the table till after executive, let me get a little more specific and I'd be glad to come in after exec. Just so I get the specific. It's just me.
Fine with waiting. We can take this item back up after executive.
And this brings us to executive session. Item number twenty-one, Commissioner's Court recess into executive session to discuss items twenty-one A through twenty-one D pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven one. Commissioner's Court will reconvene to take official action.
But he needs to use the.
Beginning June the twenty-seventh, if you have an outstanding misdemeanor or a felony warrant, we are giving the public a chance to clear their warrant by taking advantage of being processed at the satellite booking office in lieu of the county jail. This is also an opportunity to avoid your name being published on a criminal warrant list and being arrested at your home or place of business. For further information, call five four six two zero nine three or visit E P county dot com and click on Operation Safe Streets.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at seven thirty A M. at Danny's Diner, located at forty-six ninety Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at H T T P colon forward slash forward slash W W W dot E P county dot com forward slash budget forward slash financial recovery dot H T M to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice-of-the-piece cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In two thousand and fifteen, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge, and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, R-X, dot com. Happy savings.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number nine-one-five-five-four-six-two-zero-four-eight.
The Three-Forty-Six District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in two thousand and twelve for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at nine-one-five-five-four-six-two-one-one-nine, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number nine-one-five-five-four-six-two-zero-four-eight.
Beginning June the 27th, if you have an outstanding misdemeanor or a felony warrant, we are giving the public a chance to clear their warrant by taking advantage of being processed at the satellite booking office in lieu of the county jail. This is also an opportunity to avoid your name being published on a criminal warrants list and being arrested at your home or place of business. For further information, call 546-2093 or visit epcounty.com and click on "Operations
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barriz started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal
How about she took it to court and won?
Commissioners Court has reconvened into regular open session. Item #20, Budget and Finance, approved Amendment #41 to the County of El Paso's 2017-2018 Operating Budget. This budgetary amendment will decrease grants by $16,332, thus decreasing the County of El Paso's 2017-2018 overall operating budget of $488,928,0353 to $488,911,671,53.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. I went back and looked at the appropriations for the jail annex and jail detention. Jail detention medical appropriations were 2.6 million. Jail annex was just over 4.6, for a total of $7.19 million. As I stated, part of the shift of the appropriation transfer we're doing... As I stated, part of the shift of the appropriation transfer we're doing for the medical is because POD-D opened later than anticipated and we had a higher appropriation in the annex. Additionally, and separate apart from that, the two contracts for our medical services that are paid out of this are for our Emergence Health Network, has a total contract value of $1.5 million, and University of Texas Medical Branch, which has a contract value of $6.76 million, for a total of $8.27. The difference between the appropriations of $7.2 million and $8.2 million for the contract value, we had just over $800,000 budgeted in contingencies for our medical CPI inflator, and that's the necessity of the $218,000 we're transferring from contingencies as planned to the jail annex, excuse me, jail detention.
So the 218 is the inflator?
Part of it is. Technically, if the inflator had held all the way and we got full billings from EHN, we'd be transferring closer to $900,000. But because of the delay in opening POD-D and we only pay the actual billings from EHN with the inflator, the transfer is about almost half a million dollars less than the value of the contracts. But the medical inflator for both EHN and UTMB was 4.1% on the Southwest Medical CPI. I did verify that and did verify all the payments, and I'm comfortable with this. And that is a standard practice for us to budget an amount generally somewhere between $300,000 to $500,000 for medical CPI in our contingencies until we actually know the CPI. The CPI, we use the November-published CPI.
So the issue with the open floors, though, is that, I guess, how much would you attribute to CPI and how much would you attribute to open floors?
Oh, gosh. CPI, the UTMB contract went from a payment of $251,000 per jail per month to $282,000. CPI alone for UTMB was about $670,000.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. The inflator for EHN was about $80,000. I have that number right here. If I quote the right one. Yeah, that contract value went from $1,044,000 to $1,507,000, so it was about $59,000.
Make a motion to approve?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, I think we are adjourned for today. Thank you all, have a great week. Stay fresh. Yeah, hydrated.
This concludes today's meeting at 12:13 p.m.